All right, the time is 5:04. Sorry for the delay. We didn't have a quorum, so we cannot start our meeting without having enough individuals up here to have a quorum. So the meeting is called to order. This is our city council workshop. First on the agenda is our, item number one, the minutes, consideration for the minutes. Do I have an motion to approve the minutes for our last April second meeting?
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Gibson and second by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion? You can go ahead and cast your vote, please. Okay, we can publish the vote, please. We have four yays and no objection, motion passes. All right, so we'll move on. We have our workshop discussion concerning onboarding. This was requested by Councilmember Westbrook, and I think it's going to continue to be one of these items that we will have on a continuing basis so that we can see exactly what we need to add to the onboarding process, because there's always things that come out. So I'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion on this one?
I think what was put in the agenda packet for the workshop was fine. I don't know that there's anything else that needs to be added. So, I mean, because the question becomes to me sometimes when you're running for office and you go in and fill out your paperwork, and you talk to the city secretaries and go, hey, so what's the process when I win? They can give you the process. I don't know that we need to keep this on a workshop agenda unless something else arises when we have new council members. I think what was in there is self-explanatory.
So we should just bring it up as...
As needed.
As needed.
Not on a constant basis, yes.
Any other comments on this one? No? No, the onboarding process is very time-consuming, technical, and also sometimes, you know, new stuff comes up. But I think that with that, leaving it, taking it off our workshop, I think we can go ahead and move forward on it. And as council needs to add something to it, we could always do it at the next workshop if requested by council. All right, we'll move on then to item number three, the workshop to discuss implementation of the Women's History Month program. That was by Councilmember Westbrook, and he's not here. Any information that we can share?
Nothing new. As you remember, Mayor, at the last workshop, we got about halfway through this item, and then we had to call the meeting for time. So if there are any other council members that want to comment, I think this would allow that opportunity, otherwise we can move on.
I think it needs to be removed from the agenda item as well. I thought we discussed it last meeting, and we all kind of had a consensus that we'll let the library continue to do the Women's History Month.
Okay. All right, then. Now, we'll close that item, then. The next one is workshop on the potential modifications and enhancements on Moving on Main. Mr. Williams?
So, Mayor, moving on Main, of course, we know it's our spring event, and it's popular, and there are a variety of comments that tend to be made in terms of how we could enhance it. And what we wanted to do is go ahead and bring this forward as a workshop for the council to discuss ways that we could potentially enhance or improve the program, just to give a, like I said, the intention of these workshops is to allow that free flow of conversation, and if there's something that somebody would like to add, staff is more than willing to receive it.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, have we done a public survey on this? I mean, do we have information, feedback from the public? Because I'd hate for us to sit up here and come up with good ideas that the public goes, that's not what I was thinking of.
I don't, if there has been a survey conducted, I'm not aware of it. Lauren, do you want to address that?
Just so I'm not shouting. So we have done polls on social media. We haven't done, you know, a survey mailed out to residents that's statistically valid, but we've done Facebook polls, like, what element did you like the most? How were the food trucks? We do send out surveys after the event to all of the vendors and all of the food trucks.
And that's all I was talking about. I'm not talking about necessarily a statistically valid survey or anything like that, but getting feedback so that we have something to start with, some ideas to toss in there to start with that aren't ours necessarily. Do we have that?
We don't have anything open-ended, like, what would you like to see differently necessarily? It's more about what event was your favorite, or what element was your favorite? What should we bring back? And then operationally on, like, the food truck side, you know?
Right.
How did you do? That kind of a thing. So, no, we haven't done an open-ended. We do talk a little bit about Parks Board, you know, and they've brought forth some stuff over the years, but it's just sort of, on an informal basis.
I mean, because I know that all of us have talked with people out there on the street during the event and after the event. It's always popular, it's always, you know, very positive feedback that you get, but there's also things that people go, hey, why can't we do it on Saturday versus Sunday? You know, for example, you know, why do we have to do it in the middle of the day? Things like that.
Yeah. On the timing, that was something that we had, when, you know, the mayor and the Y had inaugurated that event. It was modeled after the San Antonio Seculvia, and it's always on a Sunday afternoon. That was kind of, and we've been back and forth on that over the years, and we've just kept it the same, given that that was the original timeframe, but open to, yeah, change.
And again, it's not for me. That's just kind of some feedback that I've received as well. And I know we've all talked about this, but...
Well, part of the reason, like you said, you know, we're closing down our Main Street. There's really not much activity on a Sunday in those shops there.
Right.
Where there probably would be on a Saturday.
But then again, next year it'll probably be under construction, or a good chance.
That is true.
Another item of note is that we may run into significant hurdles in terms of putting on a program altogether.
Right.
Because of the construction.
In the same space.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Moving on aviation, I think is...
Oak Street, whatever.
Oak Street, Pickle Park.
Councilmember Hayward?
So, one of the things that came up was when the bars were open, they couldn't, they didn't serve anything. And so an idea came up where maybe if we're doing this, so that if the bars are opening up for the people to be there, we have a cup, and every year you have to buy the cup to get the alcohol. So you pay so much, sort of like how they do at Worst Fest, you pay for the cup and you get the alcohol, or you pay for a pitcher, and then we change it every year so that people can't, a color, so that people can't come back with the cup from last year like they bought another cup.
But the bottom line there is that to allow alcohol on the street outside of the bar during the event.
Yes. That would be one of those that, you know, I know back in the past, when they did Shirts Fest and those kinds of things, the city had alcohol and so, you know, sold alcohol so that people could have it. And I know that some people liked that. I know some people talked about having it on a Saturday as opposed to a Sunday, because a lot of people, you know, go to church, or they complain that they have to make a choice between coming to the, moving on Main or go to church, or, you know, different things. And so just trying to, but I think the way it's laid out with the kids and having things for the kids to participate, I think it's a good thing. But I think looking at maybe something like that, maybe changing the date or making it more in the afternoon, later in the evening, since it's so hot in the middle of the day, and that might keep some people from coming out. Just a thought.
Councilmember Gibson?
I second what Councilmember Hayward is saying. I think that it's good to create an opportunity for our businesses to also be a part of that event. But my question is, do, has there, how do we keep some sort of data on how many people really actually go to this event? Because, I mean, I've seen it over the past couple of years. Yes, it's a great event, but are we struggling? The question is, are we struggling with attendance, or are we, like, what is truly the necessary, the need of having this on the workshop, Mayor?
It's not really, it's more or less like an after-action type of thing. I mean, we experienced moving on Main. If it can be improved, any new ideas? That's the whole purpose of putting it on the workshop and getting an idea from council which direction do we keep doing the following, or do we change it to a Saturday as someone suggested? Do we make it a music festival? Or do we change the hours from four to 10, or six to 12, or whatever it might be? That's the only reason it's here, so that we can go ahead and discuss it and find out whether or not do we do the same thing again next year or change it up.
I do think we should change it up, because I would caveat on why to change it up is because we see more families with children don't want to get overheated, things like that. And if we're going to bring in, you know, music and things like that, that's also bringing in local talent. That changes the game, that brings in their, quote unquote, as young kids say, their followers and other things like that. So that really does allow for people to actually know where the City of Shirts lands. So I do think that that would be a great way to provide some sort of light, shining light here on the City of Shirts.
Now, there's several possibilities that we could do. If we do change the hours and make it later at night, definitely it would have to be a Saturday and not a Sunday. You know, that's one option. As you indicated, we can make it a music festival and alternate it every year where we have it in the afternoon. And those are different options available. It's just the direction that this council wants to move forward on. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I think we still need to focus on, this was a family-oriented outdoor event, you know, and to keep, we're either going to break away from that, or we're going to keep that same theme and just kind of work some changes into it. You know, you can work a band into later in the afternoon, but you should also have something that's still, if you're going to keep the moving portion of it, you know, have a bike rodeo for the kids, or maybe a 5K to kick it off, something along that line, to keep that same theme and that family orientation. So you don't want to start it off at 6 o'clock at night. You know, you want to be able to have that a little bit earlier during the day for that aspect. Or if we're just going to flip it out and go back to party in the park, you know?
Maybe somewhere in the middle?
You could do that, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, it does sound like we're talking about a different event, a music festival type thing. And I know we've had those conversations before that, you know, maybe we need to try to do some things more geared towards adults. We do everything for the family, and we had talked about, you know, we did the 60th down on Main Street, 60th anniversary. That was kind of what we're talking about. It was music, and it was alcohol, and that kind of a thing. Similar to what they're doing in Brumfels, the Singer Fest they just had. And I think, yeah, integrating the event with the bars and the restaurants, that's kind of the theme of what we're trying to do down there is a possibility, but it would be a break from the moving on Main, because that was a health and wellness in our thing. It was with the Y, you know?
Are there other events that maybe this is modeled after? And are there aspects of that other event that maybe we haven't incorporated, or that is it just like those events?
So it's like the Seculvia-type events that happen around the country and that happen in San Antonio, but because we don't have the length of an urban street that they do, ours is condensed and it's just a little bit different, so we bring in more of the vendors.
So what are the aspects of that event?
So all the bars and restaurants that are existing on those streets open up, and it's just a different feel than ours. You know, we have to create the activity, because we only have a few restaurants and bars currently. But we did do a bike rodeo one year. We've done a few different things. I think, we've had this conversation a couple of years back, I think events just have a lifespan. Over time, people kind of get tired of the same old, and so they want something new and fresh, and it's okay to retire something and do something different. We're totally open to that. I think maybe this would be a good break from that and try something new. Obviously, yes, the street is going to go under construction. That is going to significantly affect our ability to host there for two years. So maybe we take the time to plan something different, keep talking about this, open to suggestions.
Mayor Proton MacLusso?
Yeah, I was going to just kind of piggyback off of what Tim said, you know, discussions kind of veering away from what I think the original purpose of that event was, just speaking with the mayor and Freddie with the YMCA. I know that wasn't really the thought of it, but not to say it's a bad idea to move away from it. I think that there is an appetite for those type of events, and I think brainstorming on new ideas would be, you know, worthwhile endeavor for us, because I think that there are opportunities where we can, you know, build off of that.
One thing that you mentioned is construction. What is our plan for moving on Main if there is construction in April next year?
So I spoke with engineering. It looks like late fall, winter, they may be able to start the utility work. It's possible that the contractor could be done or clean up in time. Also, not possible, you know, we run that risk. And then Phase Two would be the water line, so the street would be torn up for the water line, and then Phase Three would be the entire reconstruction. So, yeah, over like a two to almost three-year period, we run the risk of not being able to host it. You know, I'd hate to have to go through all that and then have the contractor not be done or not cleaned up, you know, because there's going to be a lot of trenching. So it's possible they could pack it all and put plates over it and all that, but then kids' bikes might, you know, fall on the plate, you know? I don't know. I think maybe we do a pause.
I think we were considering either pausing the event itself, or, I mean, as a secondary, it would be to move it somewhere else.
Reinvent to something different.
I think Oak Street might work, because most of the houses are facing the other streets. There's very few that are actually facing the Oak Street. That's a possibility, but, you know, we'll have to do some analysis and see if it will work there. Councilmember Hayward?
Since the street's going to be torn up, that's one of those where if we pause the event, try something else, someplace else, then when we come back, it seems to be like a new, fresh kind of idea, because then Main Street will have its fresh new look, so more people will want to come out and see the fresh new look, instead of trying to make something and force something to happen. I think now may be the time to pause. Like, you know, like you said, sometimes events run their course.
Yeah.
And I remember the first couple of times moving on Main was there, a lot of people, it was a lot more people.
Right.
Out there, and now it's not as many people.
Right.
That's out there, so they're probably, you know, waned off of it. So maybe taking the time to do something else that's maybe a little bit simpler, or do something in the park, and then come back, and then it's fresh and new, and then everybody's like excited all over again. Sometimes you have to pause to get them excited again.
I think that would be a great idea. Like you said, with the new street lighting and all the new things that Main Street's going to have, it's going to have a totally different feel, and it'll be an exciting thing to come back with a new event there. You know, I think from a staff perspective, we'd love to propose something smaller, maybe in a park, but then really focus on the holladazzle thing. You know, you guys have been talking about that and the trail lights, and it would give staff time to really move that project forward if we could pause on that, moving on Main.
Well, I like that idea of focusing on holladazzle, because we always, I think with staff and with council, we've always had that mindset of making it a multi-day event so that it becomes something that people want to come to from all over. So that might be a good idea.
Councilmember Brown?
I was just kind of listening to all that there, and, you know, I have no problem shifting it away from that. That's a great concept, you know, the thought process there. Just move it off. Just, hey, we're under construction. We're going to do something else for a couple of years, and at the end of it, celebrate going back to Main Street maybe and see what happens, but in the meantime, let's do a party in the park for a couple of years, you know, and maybe just change it to an adult theme, or more adult theme. Never grow up.
Every kid's an adult in the park.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gibson?
So, I 100% agree with changing it, because we could put the, moving on Main on pause. When we do that, may I suggest, because I did go on the YMCA Greater San Antonio for the, how do you pronounce it?
Seculvia.
Seculvia. Got it. So they have a few statistics here that are actually very, you know, geared to understanding if something is working or isn't working. So if we do the party in the park, like, let's try to figure out if our, you know, if our attendees survey reported their reason for attending was for, you know, physical activity, or otherwise they would be sedentary, or report they're more physically active because they came to the party in the park, and then they actually have their numbers from 2011 all the way to present. So, you know, and then with the block off for COVID, it's again, you know, not applicable due to COVID. But I think I would like to see, like, how are we gaining momentum with our residents instead of just going and doing whatever? I want to know, like, that this is going to be worth their time, your time and the staff's energy, and something that they really, really will like to see back. So if possible, if we could kind of make sure that we, you know, stand behind, getting some numbers behind it, so that we know that we're really moving in the direction that our city wants us to. Thank you.
Any other comments? I am very concerned about the construction on Main Street, and I think that we have two options. We either postpone it, or we have party in the park. I just don't want to risk, you know, pushing the contractor to do something, and then all of a sudden, you know, something else is overlooked at that time. So if there is construction there, I think we should either postpone it or have party in the park. That's the direction I think that we should be going in this situation with that construction on there.
Can I ask for one clarification?
Yes.
Party in the park, we just used to call it that, but we, we've got a lot of creative ideas from staff, right? So we, you know, we had brought to you that long list of stuff that we could come up with. Can we come up with something and bring it back to you guys for feedback? We've talked about them many times.
Yeah, I think the direction, I think the direction we're getting is that, for starters, we need to pause moving on Main because of the construction, at least for a couple of years. As far as what we replace it with, we'd like the opportunity to maybe go back and regroup as a staff and bring you all some ideas.
Yeah, definitely.
And maybe come back with a recommendation.
Yes.
Or at least a couple of recommendations on what we can do.
Can I make a motion to pause moving on Main?
Well, this is not an action item, so...
Sorry, not an action. Okay.
We'll just take that as direction, and the one for spring of '25, we'll, we're not, we won't be having it for...
We'll bring it up for council for actual action.
Thank you.
And likely, you know, as is the case on a lot of these, they'll come back through the budget process.
Correct.
If we do come up with another event, we'll develop a budget, and we'll get some numbers together, and hopefully, you can't really, you can predict participation, but you really don't know until you have the event.
We haven't had anything not be successful here.
Right.
Yeah.
That's true. All right. All right, that takes care of item number four. So we'll move on to item number five. This is a workshop to highlight domestic violence related to services that are managed through the crime victim's liaison office through the collaboration of relationships with law enforcement agencies, tri-county district attorney's office, and other non-governmental organizations that includes an assortment of services mandated by law and otherwise. Councilmember Watson, you brought this up to our attention.
So, I'm sorry, just to interject really quickly, if we could. So Lieutenant Lacour's here.
Okay.
And if maybe to give an opportunity for him to talk about some of the things that we currently do, to add some backdrop, is that okay?
Yes. Because I was just concerned with the recent posts that we're reaching out for assistance. So I was just trying to see if there's something more that we can maybe discuss through the budget, or just what we can do to maybe get a little bit more information out there.
Okay.
All right. Floor's yours.
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Williams, council. To answer that question, I've got Ms. Heather Davis with us. She's our victim's liaison, and I think giving you some of the education of what we currently do will answer a lot of your questions on how we provide for our victims, and what resources we give them, or provide information on how to get those resources, maybe some information on how we take action in certain scenarios if you wish. But I think what she's passing out is a little slide deck to give you some information. She's got some other things here on what we provide to our victims. And I'm going to turn it over to Heather, because I think she's probably our best expert to explain to you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight, Heather Davis. I met all of you in February. I started in January, and then we did the introductions in February, so, and then I saw some of you on Moving on Main, talking about moving on Main. But, so I did a very small, I know I don't have that much time, so I won't, I could talk for a long time, but, so I did put together this very small presentation regarding the services, and I know you wanted to focus more on domestic violence regarding what we offer, and if any of you have any questions or concerns, you can reach out to me individually if you wish. But I am the crime victim liaison or advocate with Shirts Police Department. I started in January. Krista is now with Sibolo. So thank you for having me, with Shirts PD, and they're wonderful, by the way. To give you a little background about myself, I have a master's and a bachelor's in criminal justice. I retired in August from TDCJ as a parole officer. I handled mental health and monitors and sex offenders. So I have a little background. I've dealt with victims in that aspect. I also worked in the DA's office in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, because I am from originally Wisconsin, but I grew up here, and I worked with the domestic violence unit there. So on page two, the crime victim liaison by Texas Code of Criminal Procedure 5604 is what designates me with my position. Page three, there's some domestic violence statistics here for you, and I wanted to focus more on when incidents occurs and I become involved is, we have a couple systems with Shirts PD. One is the call for service, and the other is police officers. So that's how I become involved, or the officers themselves can reach out to me if there's a domestic violence or any incident that occurs, and that's how I get involved. So I become involved with the victims, and I reach out to them, I provide services to them. And when the officers initially become involved with the victims, there is a packet that is provided to the, I didn't bring it, I apologize for that, but they are given a packet to the victims, and then I also will reach out to them, and there's a client log sheet, I kind of have it written on right now, that I review. Oh. Here's an incident, oh, here's an incident form that the officers also review with the victims. But there's a smaller packet that the officers do provide to the victims. But when I'm on the phone with them, I review this, and in this, it has crime victim compensation. It reviews the criminal justice process with the victims, so they're aware of what occurs after law enforcement becomes involved with the victims, and it goes to the detective, the police officers, and then it goes to the district attorney's office, and then the district attorney actually is the entity that makes the decision on whether there's charges, and then the victims actually become a witness for the state. So I'm the one that explains that to them. On this form, it also helps explain protective orders to the victims, because on the scene, an emergency protective order can be initiated. I'm sorry if I'm going really fast, but I know I don't have that much time. And then a final protective order can be issued, and I assist with that as well. I give them the application, and then depending on if it's Bear County, Guadalupe County, Comal County, because we are a tri-county here, so I assist with giving them the applications and then directing them to the correct county of where they need to go to follow through with that. Another services provided is safety planning, referrals to counseling services, scheduling forensic interviews, SANE exams, property return, and case status with courts. Any questions regarding any of that?
No, not the intake. I was just trying to see if maybe we can put, I guess, just more media coverage on it, like the social media part of the aspect of it, just for the notification, so they know where to go. Of course, they're going to call it 911, but there were, do we offer, you know, Shirts has a church or anything like that? And I didn't have an answer. I'm like, you know what? I don't think we did. So I said, you know, just call your local, if it was Sibolo PD or Shirts PD. But I was just seeing if there's maybe something else that maybe you all needed through, you know, the budget or anything like that.
For social media?
For just more awareness part of... For just more awareness part of.
Yes, ma'am. I believe we can absolutely, we can put some awareness of what services are provided. If you're a victim or a potential victim of, of family violence or want to reach out to somebody, they can reach out to the police department. Or if they want to go and talk to someone else, I think we can probably put something out on social media with that.
Okay.
The next page shows the shelters and crisis centers and DA's offices that I've established relationships and agencies in the surrounding counties that I work with. And there's so many of them that I couldn't have possibly named them all. But the one, Thriving Hearts with Guadalupe County is one of the main agencies that I work with in the area. And they also have a shelter there, which is a great resource. So if there's a domestic violence situation and the victim, man or woman and children need a home or shelter and they need to be replaced, then I would contact, actually Ashton at Thriving Hearts and she helps me with that. Another good one is the Family Violence Center in Bear County. If the victim lives in Guadalupe County or Comal County and they want to relocate to another county to get away from the suspect, then that's a good, then they might want to go to a whole different county to, to relocate. Page five shows the different crimes that is reviewed and that I deal with. Any questions? I know it kind of went fast.
Councilmember Westbrook.
Yes, so is there anything? You're the, you're the mayor for the next week or so. You're in charge of the budget. Is there anything you're missing that you could use? Is there anything that would make the program better?
In regards to family violence?
Family, domestic violence against women, however you want to.
A great shelter would be wonderful in the area that, for women's shelter, emergency, emergency, a women's emergency shelter would be absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
Because there's overcrowding currently, am I correct? For some, well, I was notified, somebody was saying that there was no spot for anybody. So I don't know how true that was or.
Supplies?
A spot, availability.
Oh, yes, yes.
For somebody that was needing to, to leave their home and they were seeking assistance, but I guess they were calling around and they had nowhere to go. And so that was my question. What can we do that y'all would need to maybe build our own or funding wise? What can we do?
Part of that's location. Part of that is where the victim would want to be and want to go. A lot of that is because their children are in schools and they want to keep the children in the school district. That is part of the challenge with that. Because if they're in Guadalupe County and they're in a certain school district, say they're in Shirts, they want to keep them in Shirts, there is no shelter here in Shirts. So wanting to keep them here is a huge challenge. So that's where we kind of struggle with that. So I would say that would be the.
So what, what are the resources that are available and where are they located? And what's their capacity like right now?
So I, I did bring some pamphlets. So this one is the Thriving Hearts pamphlet. And I can pass these out to you if you guys would like to see these.
That's in Guadalupe?
It's Guadalupe, Gonzalez, Karnes and Wilson. That's where Thriving Hearts serves. And then this one is the Family Violence, which serves Bear County. This one is Comal County. So we have different.
Counties.
Sorry. I should have given them all. As a parole officer, I did work in the 17 surrounding counties. So I know of different counties having many different shelters, crisis centers. But it's all depending on where the victim would want to go. And you don't want to revictimize them to make them up and move because that's part of the process of not wanting to revictimize them. And when you're moving them, and that's something that we're trying to avoid. So, but if there's a domestic violence situation, there's an assault, a strangulation, then sometimes it's, it's something that has to happen.
Councilmember Hayward.
Another, another thing that I do is I have this folder that I give to, that I hand out if I see them. A lot of my contact is done over the phone. But if I see them in person, I will hand out the folder. And this folder has the pamphlets. It has a protective order application. It has business cards in here. It has a crime victim compensation application. It has, and I think, well, everything in here is important. It also has the abuse wheels. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with the abuse wheels. It explains how it works. And there's many of them that I put in here. And a lot of women and men aren't familiar with, with any of these. And so I have many of these in here. It has a checklist of, of safety plan, emergency documents to take with you. And that's also in the flyer for the family, in the family violence flyer as well. So all this is with my business card and it's in the, the folder.
Councilmember Hayward, do you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I guess because you're saying there are different locations around where people can live. But to my knowledge and understanding the way a lot of this is and talking with people, there is never really enough locations, no matter how many you put out.
True.
And so I, I guess when you're at capacity, is there something that you do? Because you're saying not moving them. And so what are the options if they can't, you can't move them or you can't do an emergency relocate? What's that?
There's always somewhere for someone to go. It just depends on if they want to take advantage of that place to go. And some of the places are not the best where they want to go. But there's Women at the Well, there's Haven for Hope. And I know some of you are probably familiar with that. And that's not the best place to go. I've had offenders there. It's, but it's, it is a place. So it, it, there are options, but it's probably not the ideal.
Councilmember Westbrook.
Just how, how much training or education, how young do you attach them? Like SROs, are they familiar? Is this a problem in high schools? Do y'all reach out to high school students? High school students ever, I guess, complain to SROs about any domestic violence?
That would probably be.
So are every police officer is trained on domestic violence and family violence? So, and that, as, as they become basic peace officers, then we're also trained, you know, we have continuing education and occasionally that comes in where we're trained on that as well. So specifically, is there a course for us to take for high schools? No, at the present, but it is, it is incorporated because family violence can be from age 12 on up. So the family violence is family violence to us.
Thank you.
I have just one question for you. The Thriving Hearts in Guadalupe County, what's the capacity there?
Eleven. There's eleven rooms. So three of the rooms are family rooms. So it can hold up to five or six. And then there's four rooms for single, for single. And then the others are for double or triple.
All right, thank you. We're up to a hard break here. Counsel, did all your questions get answered? Okay.
So, so Mayor, if I could just recap, the direction that I think I heard from counsel was, is to, is to increase our social media awareness in terms of resources, Councilwoman Watson, is that, okay. And then reevaluate shelter options. If it were, say, a city-run shelter, we can, that would be something we would want to look through our capital improvement program process as well as our operating budget. So we, that, that would run through our normal budgeting process. And then the social media awareness, we could probably start looking at that right away.
Okay.
Hey, Steve, as well, with the City Magazine, because a lot of people get that in the mail. Everybody doesn't go on social media. So I think having something in the magazine, so when it gets mailed, then they have a resource.
Got it.
Item number six will be on our workshop agenda for our next meeting. And with that, at this time, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.